All right, Pete, we're recording and we are streaming.
Okay, welcome everybody to the Town of Colony Planning Board. This is a new era. We did our first virtual Zoom meeting a week ago and it turned out well. I would say that the meeting took a little bit longer. I'm not sure exactly why, but I think because we all had to take turns or there's a maybe a certain inefficiency to it. But we I think we did a good job and everybody was heard. And I think everybody was polite and the discussion went well. We hope everybody out there is doing well and feeling well. I'm not sure, is Steve Hyder on here? Because I was getting.
Yes, he is. He's having difficulty with his video, so we have him in audio only.
Okay, so let's say for the record, who's here? I see Steve Hyder is here. You just confirmed Lou Mayon, Paul Rosano, Chip, Craig Chamlean, myself, and Kathy Marinelli is here, our counsel, and Sean McGuire, the head of the department. There's also, the applicants are also, I can see them there, and they'll be called at the appropriate time. Sean, do you have any business that you'd like to discuss before we call the agenda?
No, just my report is as I said with last time, we have two referral, or actually five referrals from the town board that we're working on. We're going to start stacking those into future meetings for your consideration. And we have two more that are on the way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will call up the first item on the agenda, which is for sketch plan review. 2044 Central Avenue, it's a mini mart redevelopment. The description is redevelopment waiver request for the construction of a new one-story, 3,000-square-foot mini mart with four fueling pumps and a 720-square-foot stealth-standing car wash on a parcel that was previously a Getty gas station. Sean, do you have any comments before we turn this over to the applicant?
I'd ask Zach if he has his microphone on just to review this project. Zach's the planner leading this this project.
You want Zach to speak so we can ensure that we?
Yeah, if he's got his mic on. If not, doesn't look like it. I'll just jump in here. So 2044 Central Avenue is a redevelopment of the former Getty gas station. That station was closed and then subsequently demolished with the demolition completed in January 2014. And so what we have before us is a redevelopment proposal. That's why we don't have a TD assigned to this. For a 3,000-square-foot convenience store with four fuel pumps, making this actually a mini mart by our definition, and including a 720-foot car wash. We saw this at DCC, I believe, on February 12th. I'm just trying to jump screens back and forth here for review and comment. And so once now we've completed the DCC review, this is before the board for sketch plan.
Okay, I just want to question one thing. I'm not sure there's a precedent for no TDE just because it's a redevelopment. I'm not sure where that comes from.
Okay, we'll verify that.
Okay. Because I think there probably should be a TDE on this.
Okay.
So you want to turn it over to the applicant now, right?
Yeah, if I could, yeah.
Do you want to do a sidebar with Zach to make sure to figure out what's going on with the audio?
Yeah, he and I will figure that out.
All right, okay.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Sean, you had me muted.
Sorry about that.
Hi, this is Vic Capenar. I haven't heard a thing yet. This is the first time I've heard anything.
Ah, okay, Vic, this is Pete. You know your project. So we didn't say anything of real substance, except for this is a redevelopment project. And Sean talked about the history of it. And so we're ready to turn it over to you. So we apologize for that. We're still working out the kinks.
That's okay. I mean, listen, I'm happy that we're able to do it this way. So everyone, I think, knows that this is an old Getty station. And when I did my foil prior to doing the variance, I found that this property has been used as a gas station for at least 50 years. And at one point, believe it or not, and I'm sure Mr. Rosano will know this, it had 16 fuel pumps on it and 32 fuel stations.
I do remember, Victor.
I figured you would. So to make a long story short.
Remember very well.
The property, obviously, within the last few years has been, the old Getty station's been removed. Property's been cleaned up. It was remediated under DEC standards, and I sent a copy of the no further action letter when I wrote back in October to Mike Tengler and Joe LaCavita. Then we received the variance from the zoning board with some limited hours of operations. When we went to the first board meeting, the neighbors on both sides, Marjorie and Alta, had some really good comments, some concerns. The zoning board listened to it. And when they granted the variance, they limited the hours of operation from 6:00 to 11:00. They required down-styled box lighting, no vacuum, dumpster pickup at reasonable hours, fuel delivery at reasonable hours. They were placed on the approval after my office, myself and Bowler Engineering had a really productive meeting with the neighbors on both sides of the street, listens to their, listen to their concerns. And when we back, went back in on October 3rd, two of the seven neighbors showed up and spoke in favor of the project and the board granted the variance. So this is a redevelopment. We're looking to build a 3,000-square-foot C-store with four fuel pumps and a single-car automated car wash, as you can see on the site plan. As I said, we believe, and I believe that Joe Grasso would believe, that we fall within the redevelopment guidelines under section 190-55.1 of the code. And we're looking to get this sketch plan reviewed tonight and move on towards a concept. That's pretty much it.
Okay, Joe Grasso, I'm going to impose upon you, since you're here anyway, I'm not sure if you're the assigned TDE. Have you absorbed enough to make any, give us any thoughts before we discuss it as a board?
Not, 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 not too much, and we haven't been assigned as the TD. But you know, one thing that I think the board has to, has to consider early on is the proposed access arrangements. Obviously, we've got cross connections to both side streets, which is something that we're always supportive of, although, you know, sometimes it meets some concerns from the neighbors. So that's something to keep in mind, you know, whether or not the, you know, the, the project warrants a direct full access curcut on the Central Ave is something that, you know, the board should be mindful of. You know, and then there's some, you know, just general, the separation, you know, when we're looking at commercial up against, you know, single-family residential buildings. We want to make sure that there's, you know, some good physical screening there, typically through a combination of landscaping and fencing. And with the, the way the building is located, so close to the back property line, and the utilities that are proposed there, it doesn't seem like it would allow much room for separation to those single-family residential properties, so. You know, just a couple of thoughts to, to consider at this time.
Okay, I had similar thoughts myself. Victor, can I ask you one question, then we'll, then we'll turn it over to the board members? The sixth condition on the variance says defer to PEDD. That's the Planning and Economic Development Department. Do you know, do you know what that, your interpretation of that is? And if Kathy Marinelli has any ideas?
I gotta be honest with you, it was so long ago that I got the variance. I'm not 100% sure what they meant by that. But, but I wanted quickly respond to what Joe Grasso just said. There are no residential homes behind the property. In fact, as you're looking at the site plan right now, to the right, it's a commercial operation. And I'm not 100% sure what it is, but while it is residentially zoned, it's a commercial operation. And on the left, it's a vacant parcel. So, you know, I just want everyone to understand that.
Okay.
And now regarding the access point, I want, I should have mentioned that before, there were two full access points on Central Avenue. We removed one of them, as you can see. And when we had the DCC meeting, there was a comment made by the DOT that they wanted to remove the front, the only one on Route 9. And because of the turning radiuses for the truck movement to get in and out, they reversed their position and said that they were okay with that access. When we had this discussion of the zoning board, there were comments made by both neighbors on both sides, Marjorie and Alta. And we agreed that we put signs up that prevented vehicles from going left into the residential roadways of Marjorie and Alta. And it was a right-out-only for all traffic. And that was a comment that was made by the neighbors when we were discussing this at the two zoning board meetings. And we agreed to accommodate them by doing this. So it's, it's in, but right out only when you come out of the operation, or when you come out of the facility. So you cannot go back into the residential areas. The neighbors were, if you go just to the west, I believe it's Lyshakil Road that's close there. And they talked about neighbors that avoid that light and go down their streets to come out on the central. So that's a, not a direct the answer to your question, Pete, as to what it meant to say defer to PDD. But I think the board, the zoning board wanted to look to you guys to, you know, make any comments or conditions on this.
Well, I think we would anyway.
Are you saying a right-out-only onto Alta?
Yes, when you come out Elta, when, when they go out, we're supposed to have the signage there that says you have to go to the right. You can't go left, unless you live in the neighborhood, of course.
What about the other side?
The other side.
Is it left-only? I mean, is that what you're saying?
That's what I meant to say. In other words, when you're coming out of the, the operation, you gotta go on, you gotta go towards central. So if you're coming out on the Marjorie, you go left. If you're coming out into Alta, you go right.
I'm having trouble with audio. Is anybody else?
Yeah.
Peter, are we up for comment?
Sure, you want to go, go ahead.
Yeah, Victor, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first question I have is the position of the gas tanks underground. You got, you got the truck coming in off central to 24-foot driveway. Where is, and then you got a manageable curb. Where is the truck going to position itself when it downloads the gas?
Is Scott on this call?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Scott Shearing from Bowler Engineering. So good to, nice to meet everybody. So as a vehicle would, would enter the site from Central Avenue, they discharge on the passenger side and they'll run parallel to the, you can see where the tanks are?
Yes, I can.
So that will be the, the placement for the, for the fuel. No spots will most likely be dedicated to employee only. They anticipate getting a fuel delivery, really remains to be seen at this point, but maybe once a week, and we'll gauge that accordingly. But that's, that's, it would be pulled up parallel right to those tanks, and you still have circulation in the site.
I guess my question is, it's a 24-foot driveway. If I got a tanker truck sitting neck, parallel to the tanks, how is anybody else going to come out of Central Avenue? They're going to have to go into the other lane to go around to get to the convenience store?
So these are going to be done off-peak hours, and it takes 40 minutes to, to do a, to do a fuel drop. And there's certainly another, enough other circulation throughout the site to access the various points. And could I, could I also, I know there was mention of delivery trucks on the side roads, and I know we talked about that a little bit. And the, as, as Victor had pointed out, that was to deter, it's for trucks only so that as a vehicle, specifically a truck, was coming on to, leaving the site, coming out on Alta Road, it was going to be a right turn only. And then for Marjorie, it's going to be a left turn only, and this is specific to trucks only. That was what the residents felt comfortable with and, and the town staff that we discussed earlier.
Okay, one other, a couple of other points. Going forward, we decided a while ago, would you consider, even though I know it's a gas station, would you consider an EV station, an EV post somewhere?
In our experience, those are designed for, if you're like in a mall, you see them frequently in a mall and less frequently at a retail store, because people spend, the idea for the convenience store, or mini mart in this case, is that people are in and out in, in several minutes, and it's not enough time to, it's a big investment. And it wouldn't, it's very unlikely to be used, and that's been our experience in, in this type of use.
Well, I would think you'd want somebody that spends more time in your store if your car was hooked up to a EV station. But that's my, that's my personal opinion. I'm not going to try to hold you to that, but if they're going forward, we're going to have to look at this a little closer. Because, you know, it's going to be the future. I probably won't be around, but it's going to be the future. And when people have a car with, you know, electric car, they have the designation on their dashboard, and it'd be great if somebody needed a charge, and they'd pull them right up to this mini mart, and they'd have to go in to charge. They would probably walk into the store and shop. That's just my opinion. I have no proof of that, but I could see that happening in the future. The question on the back of the property, when I visited the site, there's a stockade fence all the way down the property line. Is that on, whose property is that on?
Scott, do you know?
I'm, I'm trying to zoom in on the plan, because that would have been pulled up on our survey. But I believe, well, let me, is the good side facing the neighbors?
No, it's, it's the opposite. It's facing, the good side is facing central.
Then I would suspect it's actually the, not on the property line, because the rule of thumb is, and again, it's just a rule of thumb that the, the good side faces the.
Residential.
Yes, yep.
Well, I just, well, if you could clarify it after, in the, just going forward, if you would just clarify that for me, just to make sure, because it's a pretty ratty-looking fence. And the one lot is definitely vacant. There's, it's even though it's residential zone, there's, there's, well, I don't want to get into it. It doesn't look very good. But, you know, we might be requiring a fence, some, some kind of screening going down, and I can't see how you could get another fence in there, if that's on their property.
Diagram here, it looks like it's on the gas station's property.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing here, Lou, but I would, I would rather get that confirmed, the concept, and we'll get that done.
Agree with you.
And that would be replaced any of these jobs.
Yeah. And what about the height of the building itself? Total height of the gas station, convenience store?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the, it was not to exceed 24 feet, but I'm just going to go to the statistics table. Can you, I can't seem to roll up on that, the top right of our plan. Yeah, so no building there now. We, it's going to be a single-story building. We'll have some architectural, probably a gable or hip roof. It hasn't been determined yet. And it's, it's suspected to be about 24 to 26 feet.
And sufficient screening of the HVAC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Who else on the board would like to speak?
I'd like to address the, the car wash. Where you have it located. So I, I would almost like to see, it looks like it's interfering with the flow of the traffic, really, the way it is. If you took that car wash and say moved it back alongside the building, maybe you might have to redesign the building so it comes forward a little bit. And have a queuing line behind the gas, behind the, the actual building that goes into the car wash building. And then when it comes out, it can either go out Marjorie, or, you know, whichever way it wants to go out. But I, I like, I just don't like it sitting where it's at. It looks like it interferes with a lot, with the flow of traffic, and it could be a hindrance.
So what we had done, I can offer you a little insight, just due to the, the size and the shape of this parcel. Obviously, we're working between six points, which are the, the roads. And then, of course, the rear property line. It's a, being rectangular shaped, we need to have 24 feet to the front. Obviously, for vehicle movements, then you have a canopy, and then you have aisle circulation. We looked at a variety of ways to orient the, the car wash in relation to the pumps in, in relation to the primary building as well. And we don't, can't have any rear circulation for vehicles on the car wash behind the building, because that would push everything forward, and it would be a trade-off with vehicle movements, either before the canopy or behind the canopy, but it would just kind of make things very clunky for circulation within the site. So we had looked at, without exaggeration, it was, we were almost into the teens for, for a variety of plans and orientations and the best fit. And really trying to keep the car wash independent, because it's going to be dedicated. And there's another brand-new car wash across the street. It's just one of those things where we hope to get a little bit of, of traffic. People interested in doing their, their, their vehicles, and we know that there's competition across the street, but it's, we're okay with that.
I do have one more question.
I'm one of the ones that remember the Indiana Oil. And that was huge.
Peter, I have one more question, and then I'll stop.
Sure, Paul.
The way I'm looking at this now, you only have 15 foot, 15 and a half feet circulation around the rear of this building. Is fire services signed off on that? I don't see how you're going to get a fire truck back there if you have to.
I think there has to be 20 feet for a fire truck.
Right, and I'm always seeing on this, I'm always seeing 15 feet, 15.
But I don't think the size of the building requires it, Paul.
Oh, just because it's 3,000 square foot?
Yeah.
Okay, so they got access on three points, three sides?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Peter, I got a couple of points, if you can.
Sure, chief.
As to the traffic, we got to remember one thing. The, and I, I realize that Victor has talked to the neighbors at length, but the neighbor's got to be also concerned with the traffic coming from Albany Street to go to this gas station. There's a lot of traffic on Albany Street that will come up through the back roads, through Marjorie and Alta. So we just have to keep that in mind going forward. That even though they may not be accessed, have to go back to Albany Street. You're going to get a lot of traffic into the gas station from Albany Street. Secondly, I too remember Indiana Oil. And Indiana Oil had a kiosk of about 100 square feet. So I realize 3,000 square feet is small for a convenience store today. But I think going forward with this project, we got to remember, even though it was a gas station for 50 years, it wasn't a convenience store plus a car wash for 50 years. It was 16 pumps, but a very small kiosk that could hold one person and a bunch of cigarettes, and that was about it.
They had the world record for cigarette sales in that place.
They, they did, and I'm not too sure they were all stamped at the right time. Only other point I, point I have, which I sort of just forgot, is the, the left-out or the right-out would be hard to enforce. We can say that we're going to put signs up there. It's going to be hard to enforce. And for whoever made the comment about the neighbors, yes, that does apply to the neighbors too, so we, we can't forget that. And the fact there's no landscaping around the place. So other than those three points, that's about it.
Okay, who else? Craig, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll jump in, Peter. The, the, the traffic flow for this car wash just doesn't work. The only way you can get to this car wash is if you come in off Marjorie. And so you're going to have people coming in off of central, and there is no way to get, you can't make that turn. At least not, not, I, I don't think most people can make that turn. I mean, in general, I in a general way, I think you're trying to put too much on this site. And it's 37,000 square feet, and I think you're, I think you're trying to jam too much in, especially given the fact that I, I appreciate the fact that the one property is being used as commercial and that the other is vacant. But the fact of the matter is that they are zoned, single-family residential. And whether or not they're occupied for that now or not, we need to protect those properties as if they are occupied for single-family residential. That's real, that's pretty much what I have.
Chip?
Yeah, what about the, what you propose to do about the stormwater?
We're, we're under an acre here. And we're going to use the best practice. We were, we were establishing, we were working with the town, obviously, for, we haven't done our, completed our design yet, but we are matching the same amount of green space as what currently exists. And we're going to, we'll review and make sure that we get work, we find a, a design that works best, obviously. And, but we're still under an acre, and we have good soils.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, did you want to say something, Susan?
There's not much that I would add, but I agree that there seems to be too much on this site. I, between the gas pumps and the car wash, I can see a lot of traffic problems in there.
Okay, Lou, did you, you have something else?
Yes, I got a couple of things here. One, I think the owner of this property is the same person that owns the property across the street on Central Avenue, or that would, they, they used car place. And you're in here for waivers, and I know the waivers that we granted over there for the used car place, they've been in violation. You, you've been, and Jaffrey, you know this, because it's been discussed with you often, that you're in violation. And I just came back there from there about an hour ago, and you're in violation right now. And I think whatever we do for this piece of property, we have to make sure that the green spaces of what there is is protected in that we, he follows through with what we grant waivers for. And I know we're going to have to grant waivers unless it's, it's already taken care of, because it's a redevelopment of the canopy in front and all that. We, we, we should be very aware that anything this, that Jaffrey does to this, that he follows through with it. He carries through. And secondly, with the signage, that, doesn't that go to the signboard? I believe that you have to go before the signboard for that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if, are you going to use the LED-type signing?
We hadn't determined the actual, what's best for the site yet.
Okay, if you use, if you use the LED-type signing, all I ask is that you don't make it so bright that it lights up the whole area. Because we've had that in previous situations, in fact, right along that corridor there, where we had, and I know the LED lighting can be adjusted, so it's low, and it doesn't sign, it doesn't show up like the sun at 3:00 in the morning.
Peter, I got one more point.
Okay, Paul.
This site has several street trees along Central Avenue. And a couple on, on Alta, at, not right, not on sketch plan, when you come back for a concept, I'd like you to talk about those, what your plan is.
Okay.
I think what you're, just to clarify, you're looking for a landscape plan at that level.
Yes, because we have to have, the CAC has to go out and review this. Once this is going to go to concept, they have to go out and review this. And they're going to, they're going to see those trees, and they're going to want to know what your plan is. And because they are street trees, in general, the town does not like those to be cut. Now, I know you need visibility for the project. I understand that. I was a businessman. But we need to know at concept what your plan is to either, either, if you're going to remove them, what you're going to replace them with. And I mean, there really isn't a lot of landscaping. This is only sketch, so I don't want to go any further with it. But be aware that that's coming. That's all, that's it.
Thank you. Sean, can you unmute Joe Grasso? That's one thing, Sean.
Oh, yep.
Did DCC review this? Because we didn't get a DCC comment on this.
Yes, they did.
Okay. I, I'd look forward to seeing what they have to say.
I thought that was in the package there, but I apologize if it was missed.
Okay, or maybe I couldn't, maybe I just didn't find it, because things are a little crazy nowadays.
Yeah, just to clarify, you know, so we're here, it's, they're requesting waivers for the fueling station canopy, the car wash, the dumpster enclosure, the front yard building setback. The dumpster enclosure is not permitted within 25 feet of the boundary line of an existing single-family use. And so that's, that's what we're after here.
Can you say that last part again, because it went in and out for me?
The the following, they're seeking, these are the waivers are seeking, the fueling station canopy, car wash and dumpster enclosure, the front yard building setback, and just to note that the dumpster enclosure is not permitted within 25 feet of the boundary line of an existing single-family use. So the location of the dumpster here is not.
Were some of those things addressed in the variance?
Yes, yes, they were.
I thought, I thought, I thought they were, but I don't have, it's hard, I got so many electronic devices going, it's hard to get, find all that.
No, it's okay. It was definitely discussed at the zoning board. No, it's okay, it was definitely discussed at the zoning board. The board looked at this. At the end of the day, they felt comfortable with the location of the dumpster being next to the building in tucked into where it is.
Well, is that specifically addressed? Is that specifically addressed?
Was it addressed?
In the, in the variant, in the document that was produced.
Uh, in in the actual decision of the board, let me just look here, I have it in front of me here. Let's see. Hours of operation, down pointing, no vacuum, dumpster pickup at reasonable hours, fuel delivery at reasonable hours. Defer to the P E D D. It didn't, the dumpster was discussed, the location was discussed in the meeting, Scott, you can confirm that, correct?
Yes, that was, that was correct, they talked about, at the time, we talked about the various locations for the dumpster. Pulling it back a little bit, but the the reality is. In the paragraph on the, in the paragraph on the top in the variance, not, not where they put the conditions in, but it's part of the application. So they, I would interpret it that they granted your application with the provisos, the six provisos that are at the bottom.
Right, that's exactly right.
Right, so what, doesn't the paragraph up above address, address some of those issues?
Yeah, it talks about dumpster low enclosure, vacuum island not permitted, yes, it does.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll have to take another close look at that. I'll give my comment. I I I agree with Craig, I mean, he pointed out an obvious thing that you can only, you can only. Pull into the car wash off of, off of Marjorie and not from any other spot on the lot. Which is unusual, you know, in my opinion. I would like a TDE to review this. I think that I agree with the comments that they're trying to do too much on too small of a space. And and the the obvious thing about the curb cuts, you know, is that the right traffic circulation? And I'd like to have that reviewed by a TDE, does anybody? How does everybody feel about having a TDE appointed?
I agree.
I agree with you.
Great.
Okay, oh. Sean, can you unmute Kathleen? She, I think she has something she wants to say.
Okay, no, I just wanted to talk about the conditions of the zoning variance, but I think you went through it. This defer to the P D, P E D D thing. I don't know that I'm not comfortable with it, I think maybe a conversation has to take place. With the chairman of the zoning board to see what they were thinking. I don't know if it's defer to the P E D D or defer to the planning board. I'm not sure what they meant.
Okay. Well, we we've said a lot, does anybody have anything else to add?
I just have one last comment, is that, you know, asking for four waivers on a project this small is really significant. That's my comment.
Well, that's why I was trying to clarify whether we're granting the waivers or whether the ZBA already granted variants to, which already addressed that, so.
Or even requesting it is significant.
Yeah, okay. Any other, any other comments or questions?
Pete.
Is that Joe Grasso?
No, it's Zach.
Hi, Zach.
I do want to say, this is, this was Mike Tangler's project, but I was in that DCC meeting. The landscaping along the front. Pure Waters had a concern because they have sewer in the front. So they don't want large trees within ten feet of that sewer line, so the landscaping, from what I was told. Should be minimal. Per the Pure Waters Department. Or small.
I was talking, Zach, I was talking about the existing street trees that are there. Not, not anything new.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Joe Grasso, did you want to say anything?
Just in terms of the the survey base map, it would be helpful when it comes back for concept that it show the existing vegetation on the site. Because the street trees obviously aren't showing up and there's a lot of utilities out there that, so saving those trees may be important. And also in looking at the air photos, I noticed that there's a significant row of trees to the rear of the site that provides. You know, quite a bit of separation from the commercial property to the residentially zone properties, and it looks like those trees are going to be cleared out. Based on, you know, the utilities that are shown back there, so I think it would be just, when it comes back for concept. It would be important to understand exactly what vegetation is going to be removed on the site.
Okay, Sean, good comments, Sean, Craig wanted to say something, I think he's muted, if you could unmute him.
And you shall have control to unmute yourselves too. There you go, Craig.
Okay, thank, thank you. You know, I I just wanted to make, make at least my position clear. I I'm not sure this project at this point is ready for concept. I I can't reiterate enough, I think it's too much, you're trying to do too much on this property, or at least in the current layout. And. So I I, again, speaking for myself, I don't want to send you down the road of. Coming back for concept, thinking that, at least, again, from from my perspective, that this project is even close to being accepted. So.
You know, it might be advisable to come back for another sketch, it's an easier discussion, you know, sketch is in some ways an easier discussion. And you won't have to spend as much money, you know, getting to that point, so.
And what I, and what I hearing is that we're, we're talking about the car wash maybe is a little bit too much. Without that, it would be.
You know, that's one possibility, I mean, that's one possibility.
I feel the same way, if you can't figure moving it back alongside the building or something, maybe we should just do away with it.
Could I offer one additional thought on the car wash by May? Sure. And that is the, the. The former freestanding sign, we have a proposed freestanding sign close on the corner of Alta and Central Avenue. In talking to the Pure Waters, they proposed no new footings in there and they would prefer that we don't have that sign in place. However, I asked them if we could actually reuse the existing freestanding sign, which is located on the corner of Marjorie Road and Central Avenue. It's an existing footing in place, the the mast is already there. So on that mast, in addition to identifying the site, we could also identify the entrance to the car wash. With an arrow directing all traffic and controlling the circulation. We'll think about, we'll think about.
That, that's not gonna work.
Okay, all right.
I guess the question is, where are they gonna queue up? On 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 Marjorie Avenue?
Okay, I I think we should move, I think we should move along off of this, I think we raised a lot of issues. We should get a TDE appointed and they, they should try to work out some of this stuff. I think Victor's worked with us long enough, I think he understands what we're trying to say.
Listen, this is Victor, I understand where you guys are coming from. I think the, these waivers that you're talking about have already been resolved by the zoning board relative to the, where the location of the dumpster is and the canopy. However, I understand what Greg is saying and others about the car wash. Let me do this, we'll leave it at that, we will revisit this with my client and our engineer, Scott. And we'll come back and we'll have another sketch plan as quick as we can. We'll make some modifications and come back in front of the board.
Sounds good.
Okay, we appreciate your time, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, give me one moment, next item on the agenda, one forty, New Carner Road, Casal Self Storage. Subdivide into two lots and construct a three-story ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-six square foot storage building. And we do have a TDE appointed on this, which is CHA. Sean, do you have anything to start this with before we turn it over to the applicant?
No, I'll just note that we did receive yesterday, and I emailed out to the board. Elevations for this project here, we've done our. Brought this through for DCC, taken a first look at it, so we're here today for you to take a look at it for, for sketch.
Okay, who's speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yep, can everyone hear me okay?
Is that Luigi?
Yes, Luigi with ABD, can everybody hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Yeah, so Luigi Flaschi with ABD Engineers, representing Tony Casal. For this project, it's known as three forty, New Carner Road. It was before this board to develop the existing facility that's, that's been constructed for the Casal rental facility. That's on the southwesterly portion of the site. The total acreage of the parcel is three point eight seven acres. It's zoned industrial. It's surrounded by maybe self-storage. Across the street is the Volvo. And I was just made aware that to the east of our project, there's a new project that's coming before the the planning board for Volvo, so. The project that we're here for. I'm sorry?
What, you got a little garbled, what was the project to the east, the new project to the east?
So it's my understanding that there's a a proposed development going in on the northeast of of this site. Where it's noted as asphalt driveway, I believe it's a new Volvo. Site plan, we're not involved in it, but there is something going into the northeast. Currently, it's vacant, and beyond that is the CarMax dealership.
Right.
So that gives you the bearings of of where the the property is. The the project that we're discussing more tonight is the self-storage facility. It is three stories, as Sean had showed you, the conceptual building elevations, it's all climate-controlled interior units. For the facility, it's got ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-six plus or minus square feet of gross floor area. We are proposing to subdivide the existing parcel. Lot one would, would keep the existing Casal rental facility. That'll sit on approximately one point nine six acres. And lot two, being the proposed self-storage facility, will sit on the remainder one point nine one acres. Access to the site will utilize the existing curb cut entrances that you see on the current site plan. In addition to adding a third entrance on New Carner Road, further to the northeast. We would utilize the, the one way in and out. Really, we would need the the one way in to the site. And and we're open for the northeast entrance to be, you know, either an entrance or an exit. That's something that we can further discuss in detail. You know, what type of entrance we would make that. Being that this is a self-storage facility, I think it it fits the site pretty well. It'll keep the traffic to a minimum, being that it's a self-storage facility. So I don't think traffic is a major concern. This is an Albany County highway, we'll certainly work with Albany County DPW. For this new curb cut entrance as well as the existing curb cut entrances to the facility there. We are proposing fourteen parking spaces. You can see where the doors are located on the proposed self-storage facility. Plenty of parking for for the the use here. We did go before DCC, we have their comments, there was nothing major from DCC. We discussed with all the departments, there's existing sewer facilities available. It's a forest main that's to the southwest of the site. The existing self, the existing Casal rental facility ties in with their own grinder pump. This proposed self-storage facility will have its own grinder pump. And a private forest main connecting to, you know, the public main that's located at the, there's an existing fault. Located at the southwest portion of the site. Water is available at the front of the site. Couple comments from Latham Water modifying the hydrant locations, things like that, which we're all agreeable to. Making those modifications for better positioning, as discussed with Latham Water. Stormwater will be similar to what was approved for the existing facility. It's infiltration. Practice where, you know, the water will just infiltrate back into the ground. There's no direct discharge or natural feature to send the water, so we'll retain it all on site, similar to what they're doing at the existing facility. This will have its own separate practice. On its own lot and it will obviously comply with the New York State DEC Stormwater Regulations and the Town Stormwater Department. Standards. Green space for both of these lots after subdividing will, will be above the thirty-five percent minimum. Landscaping can be worked out. We are proposing to keep the landscaping that was already installed on the existing Casal facility, rental facility. But we can certainly add additional trees and landscaping as we further advance the site plan. It is a three-story building, we do have access to three sides of the building. We did discuss this at the DCC meeting and the building will be fire sprinkled. Therefore, having access to three sides meets the the fire accessibility requirement. And one of the comments from the fire department on, at the DCC was that we provide a flat area along the rear of the the building. So, so that should be covered. I think that's all I have and I'll turn it back over to the board if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Joe Grasso, you're reviewing this, I know you haven't done a formal review yet, give us your preliminary thoughts.
Yeah, so, you know, first off regarding the the access. When, when the adjacent. Rental facility came up for review. You know, they had made us aware that the the long-term plan was to redevelop or to develop the rest of the the property. And one of the, the concerns that we had brought up was multiple curb cuts along this section of one fifty-five. Because we were concerned about the the rental facility getting two curb cuts and then another one being requested when the rest of the property. Came up for development, so that was a concern that we had raised, the planning board had, had supported that concern early on. But. You know, it doesn't seem like it's, it's, you know, been, you know, taken into consideration with the plan. I I understand from the proposed use that the desire is to have. You know, drive-through with a, with a large tractor trailer. And, you know, Luigi said, you know, one, you know, one of these could be one way, you know, either in or out. You know, I think, and even though it's a low-intensity traffic generator. You know, the fact that there, we're, we're putting in multiple curb cuts, three curb cuts for two properties. Should be a concern. I would say that Jim Merkel from Albany County DPW has not shared the same concern. So, you know, I I think it's something that the the planning board may want to consider, maybe it's just a concern, concern of CHA. It it was good for Luigi to bring up the fact that the adjacent property may be developed because. If it's, if it is to be developed into a car dealership, they normally look for, you know, multiple curb cuts accessing their site. So maybe there's an opportunity to, to share a curb cut between the the two adjoining uses. That's something that should be considered, you know, obviously along this quarter, and I know it's done across the street. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, it's a, it's a three-story building in an area that's dominated by one-story buildings, so. You know, it's some, the aesthetics of the building and how the building fits into the character of the area, I think, is something that the planning board. Should, you know, take a close look at. The, you know, the, the. Oftentimes, when we're looking at both a subdivision and a commercial site plan, we don't, we don't pay that much. You know. We don't focus that much on the subdivision, this one's a little bit unique because it's got a, it's got a flag that extends behind. The proposed self-storage building. And I think the purpose of that is to meet the green space on lot. Lot one, which is the rental facility. You know, I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to shift the building towards the the northeast so that. Lot one had enough green space where it could avoid the flag. Something that the planning board should should consider, you know, and and fire services did want. You know, a flat area behind the building to stage apparatus and obviously. You know, if a, if a piece of equipment was gonna get back there, it would likely have to encroach on the adjacent property, which is obviously not a very desirable. Feature. The other thing regarding. You know, the way this lot is, it's, it was a completely wooded property, obviously, you know, that when, when the initial lot was built. You know, that when, when the initial lot was built with the self, the rental facility. You know, quite, quite a bit of fill was brought in and the trees were removed. Some of the trees, the removal extended well into the site. So the site is already about half, half cleared out already. There's extensive fill that has to take place. The site sits about, the natural site sits about 10 feet below 155. So there's obviously some special grading and compaction considerations so that we don't get long-term settlement. And based on that amount of filling, all the trees are expected to be, you know, removed from the site. So what we see out there or what we should predict is that it's going to be a wide-open. You know, view between the road and the, and these facilities. And it looks like there's enough room to establish, you know, significant-sized street trees along the, along the project frontage. Or someplace along, you know, obviously it's a wide right-of-way, but there should be room to, to plant trees out there. That was one thing I noticed today when I was out at, out at the site. Let's see. And then just in terms of the way the, the lot is laid out regarding the drive right up against the front of the building. You're, you're basically eliminating the ability to have any kind of foundation plantings that could also help. You know, spruce up the view towards, you know, what's going to be a, a tall-looking building along the corridor. So those are some initial thoughts that we have so far.
I, I think they were excellent comments. Who from the board would like to speak?
Peter, I'll start if you can.
Chief Hyder, yes.
To Joe's comments with that three-story building, I realize this is an industrial area. However, if you look across the street, you got the credit union, you got a funeral home, you've got a car dealership that keeps this place pretty neat and clean. When I look at the west or the east elevation, there isn't a whole lot there that can, I, I just think it needs to be dressed up. I don't think, you know, with it being three stories, as Joe said, you know, it's, it's quite an elevation. I think something needs to be done to the facade to take away from the height, at least the opticals of it. The other thing, in addition to the landscaping, which Luigi already talked about. This borders that site to the north is actually in a village. So I would recommend the PEDV get a hold of the village and see what's actually being proposed for that. So that we're staying somewhat in line of, you know, hopefully trying to make the street some kind of uniform look. Rather than just a hodgepodge of things going down the street. So just to coordinate with the village, just see what is actually proposed for the north part of the, the site there.
That it?
Yeah, I, I think that's it. I'm not crazy about the third entrance in off of 155. I don't think these two buildings need it. Although the way it's laid out, they probably do. It's probably should have been just one for the lower one. And one for this one, which could have connected the two, but it is what it is depending on what they propose.
Yeah, excellent comments. Who else would like to speak?
I'll jump in, Pete. First, a, a question to Joe on the building height. Since, since there's so much fill that needs to be brought in. And, I mean, it's a self-storage, so I assume they're going to have an elevator inside anyway for people to move, move things up and down. Is there any, any reason why they couldn't put most, most or all that first floor below grade? And essentially lower the height of the building?
There's nothing, Craig, that I'm aware of, but that's a good question for Luigi.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is wetlands nearby. I would be concerned with groundwater. But, you know, it's something that can be looked at. You know, if there's groundwater concerns, you know, then obviously, you know, nobody would want to store their, their.
Right, obviously, yeah.
Luigi, I'm, I'm gonna jump, if I could jump in.
Yeah.
You've already heard three people raise concerns about height and I'm going to be a fourth. So if you want to get three stories and under, the underground solution, if it works, could make the, could make it work. So I'd give it some serious consideration. Otherwise, you're going to get resistance on the third story.
Yeah, and as, I mean, I think it was, it was, it was chief that mentioned it. Yeah, it's, it's industrial. But this corridor really does not look industrial in the typical sense of what industrial looks like. So even the, the front building elevation, and I know it's just a sketch. And I'm not 100% sure, were, were those meant to be? Yeah, Sean, can you throw up the, go back to the elevations? Are those, are those meant to be some kind of overhead doors that we're seeing, Luigi?
Yeah, so, so a lot of times with the, all the units are interior. So what you're looking at there is like a glass front. And those are just representing what you would look at inside the building. So you wouldn't have any access outside.
Right.
You would walk in the front entrance, which is in the center of the building. And, and those are just like, it, it's more of a display of what, what the inside will look like.
So.
I think the south elevation now. Just showing garage doors.
That's correct. That is the south elevation. I, 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 is that the south elevation or is that, that the elevation we're going to see on, on New Carner?
Yeah, that says south.
Yeah, I know.
That's what you would look at.
See, yeah, this building is sort of like halfway in between. So you, you're, you're east is my north. I think, I think of New Carnerona is running north-south. Which means the south elevation would be towards the self-storage, existing self-storage.
I think the intent is the south elevation is facing the street.
Okay, yes. And is, so is, and I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, this look. So the very first floor where those doors are, are visible is glass. Is that correct?
Is, is that correct? Yeah, that's your main entrance. You walk into the best view there.
And then what, what are those?
The garage door looking things?
No, what are the, what are the, the color, the colored areas above those garage doors for the second and third floor? What, what is, what is that intended to be? Are we seeing something, is that glass as well that we're going to see through or what is that?
Yeah, so that would be the actual building surface, some type of metal paneling system. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't see inside the second or third floor. It would be the building structure itself.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I know today that there's a lot of really very beautiful things that can be done with a metal surface building. But this is on a very busy street, a very high-profile street. And if it looks like a metal building, then I'm not going to be all that much in favor of, of that look. Just so we're, again, my own opinion, but this building need, need to, this building needs to look attractive. So.
I'll relay that to the architect.
Okay. And I, I mean, I agree with the comments on, on the curb cut. But I don't know how you get around it at this point. And lastly, and I, I meant to go back and take a look at the minutes from, from when the applicant was in before. But did they make any, my, my recollection, and I didn't get a chance, my recollection was that they had made some, some comments about what they were. In the meantime, what they were using this area for, where the storage building is, is going to be located. Am I remembering things incorrectly? Anybody on the board remember anything?
Craig, I think, I think it was an equipment lay-down area.
Okay. And are, do they have enough room? On the, where the, what will now be their only area to do what they need to do, I guess is really the.
Yeah, when I, when I was out there today, I didn't see that area used at all by any equipment.
Okay, alright, that's all I've got.
Okay, who else, board members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Chip.
What's, what, what, yeah. What are the size of the storage rooms?
I don't know. Say that again?
What are the size of each of the storage rooms?
They're all going to be a mixed variation, you know, 10 by 10s, 10 by 15s, 10 by 20s.
Just like a drive-up, huh?
Yeah, that's something that we can provide, you know, at concept level to show you what the mixed mixture of.
I was just wondering how many units you're going to have and how many elevators you're going to put in.
Yeah, that, that I'll have to get with the architect for, you know, details on the interior layout of these.
Susan?
Explain the green space. Is a green space 35% over both lots or is it 35 on each?
There's 35% greater or, or greater on each. So lot one, right now you have 36.3%. And the proposed self-storage facility, lot two, has 44.6%.
That it, Susan?
That's, yeah, it's just that there's, the building needs some serious design work.
Okay. Lou?
Well, I don't have anything. It's all been said.
Paul?
No, I'm good right now, Peter.
Okay, I, I'll just be quick. I agree with the comments that have been made so far. This is a pretty big building. And I, I, I guess it conforms with the code, but the square footage of the building is, I think, equal to the square footage of the lot. Am I correct about that? It's over 90. I don't, I don't know how big the lot is.
You're probably over.
Okay, so, a, a, and it doesn't comport with what, what, what surrounds it. Also the ingress and egress. So I, I don't have to keep, I don't have to keep repeating what everybody else said, but those are the, those are the big issues. And we're going to want it to look like a good building when we're done. Joe Grasso, do you have any wrap-up comments?
Uh, no, I just, there, there wasn't any, you know, feedback on the subdivision. And, and Susan had asked at the end about the green space. So, you know, Susan, we had looked at that because lot two has so much more than the minimum 35% is why we had thought. You know, possibly shifting the, the building over to the, to the north. Would allow that flag to be eliminated. Luigi, is that something that you could look at or is it not feasible for other reasons?
Well, I don't know how we would shift the building to the northeast because of the T-turnaround I need for a fire truck. We're looking at a, a, a small portion at the rear of the site. You're not going to see it from New Carner Road. I don't see it a big issue. I don't really want to go in for any variances or waivers. So this is one way that I came up with, you know, a subdivision that conforms to the town standard.
Joe, can you explain what you mean by a flag?
So there's a, there's a, there's a thin gore strip that's 30 feet wide. That would be owned by lot one, which is the Casal Rental Facility. That would extend all the way behind the, the, the rental building lot. You can, you can see it there. It's a, it's a thin flag. You know, so that, that lot one, if you took away all the buildings, it would look like it would be in the shape of a flag. So, so Sean, can you just highlight that 30-foot strip? And, and the, and the purpose of that is strictly to give enough green space to lot one, but it's really not. Bennett, it's really not Bennett.
I don't think we understood your comments until now, Joe.
Alright, sorry, I, I didn't do a good job explaining it. So it's, it's to, it's to meet the green space requirement of lot one. Without that, that lot would probably be down around, you know, 20% green space. So that's why I was saying, you know, that, that property line between the two lots would need to shift. To, to the northeast in order to give more green space to lot one. So it actually had 35% that you would appreciate.
And we're only talking about a, a tenth of a percent that that area is accomplishing here. It's, it's not, I guess, you know, the reason I did it right was, was to gain more, more green space for that lot. Because we accomplished it with lot two.
So can you just, can you eliminate it then, Luigi?
Uh, I, it's something I could look at.
It's like 15,000 square feet. So it's, I think it's a lot more than.
Yeah, maybe it is. What, so 30 by?
It's 300 by.
So yeah, so it's almost 9,500 square feet.
Yeah, 10, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a look at it, but I, I have a feeling I'm still going to need to go into that area some, some more. I can make it less than 30 feet, but it, it's going to be some sort of shape of what you see there now. You know, I don't, I don't understand why it's a, a big issue. Again, I, I don't want to apply for any variances. It's one way that, you know, we can conform to the town zoning. You know, meeting all the requirements for green space, frontage area.
Okay, anything else?
Can we, Peter?
Yes, sir.
Once Luigi is off, can we stay on for a couple of minutes? I've got a couple of comments I want to make, not about this project, but just in general.
Counsel?
I mean.
Kathleen?
I was muted. The, the, the meeting is open to the public. I don't know what the nature of Paul's comments are, but it's a public meeting. So I don't think we can exclude.
It would, it would have to fit into one of the. Executive session exceptions to the open meeting in order to do that.
Alright, I don't want to, I don't want to throw a curveball at anybody. We'll talk at some other time.
Okay.
It has to do with, I'll just make a statement. I'm a little concerned when people go to the ZBA before they go to the planning board. This has bothered me for 10 years. It really sometimes put handcuffs on the planning board.
Right.
You, you know my point.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for now.
Okay, anything else? Well, thank you. We're, we're meeting weekly now, so we'll see you next week, next Tuesday at 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Take care. I'll be safe.